Good morning and welcome. My name is Kathy Wolf-More and I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Olathe Chamber of Commerce, Business, the Government Advocacy Committee. It is my honor to moderate today's forum. On behalf of the Olathe Chamber, the Johnson County Public Policy Council, thank you for joining us today. The Johnson County Public Policy Council comprised of the 10 Chambers of Commerce serving Johnson County and the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce developed today's questions focusing on business and community issues. And before we go any farther, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your willingness to serve. It takes a certain amount of courage to put your name on the ballot and on behalf of the Olathe Chamber, we'd like to thank you. So we will start with three-minute opening statements by each candidate, followed by question and answer, where candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. At the conclusion of the forum, each candidate will then have two minutes to make a closing statement. Due to time constraints, there will be no follow-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. Please note the candidate's speaking order will start alphabetically and then we will rotate throughout the program. So now I'd like to introduce you to the candidates and ask they give a three-minute opening statement providing background in themselves and why they are qualified to serve. We will start with Jeff Creighton. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity to be with you today and share a little bit about myself and why I wanted to seek the office. And first of all, I came to Olathe in 1984 for a job and that job quickly became a 40-year career as business manager for Harlem Parker Insurance Agency. And 36 of those years were full-time and then four years part-time and I fully retired at the end of last year. And really enjoying the freedom of retirement. But it didn't take me long when I moved to Olathe to realize that this is where I wanted to be, make up my home and to get involved in the community. And so I started out being involved in my church and then eventually immersing myself into city volunteers activities. And so some of the things that I've done, besides my business background, I've been in leadership roles at my home church, Foundry Church. I've been almost a 20-year member of the Board of Trustees of Manhattan Christian College out of Manhattan, Kansas. More than 12 years off and on on the Olathe Planning Commission. Nine years on the Olathe Citizens Police Advisory Council and about six years on the Olathe. Where did I say that? Sound like the days of hazard. And anyway, it's the Olathe Police Foundation. And so it's just been a great opportunity to be able to serve the community. And I just see this as an opportunity to continue to give back to the community that has been good to me. And so I just, I thank you for the time and I believe that the, my business background and the unique experiences that I've had qualify me to be a valuable member of the Olathe City Council.
Interesting. Thank you very much. And now we'll turn to Rob Olson.
Thank you again for having me today. I very much appreciate it. I want to start off, I served 24 and a half years on Water District Number One. Two times I was Chairman of Water One. I also served as State Representative for six years in the 26th District. And then the Kansas Senate for 14 years in the 23rd Senate District, which represents all of Olathe. Also, in some of my business background, I own a real estate company. Also, I've spent a lot of time in banking. For 13 years, I was on Bank of the Prairie's Board and worked in our community to help develop. I look forward, you know, my time in the Senate and the House, I spent a lot of time working in Olathe, trying to make it a better place to live and trying to help the people. Olathe, I'd love to take that experience to the City Council and with the knowledge of housing, finance, and how to develop and how to improve our city. We've got some areas that need to work. And also my knowledge of how the resources at the state and federal government work, try to use them here in Olathe. So I've lived here since 2001. I've enjoyed Olathe. It's, all three of my kids went to Olathe South. They've all grown up here in Olathe. Two of them live here, one's off to college right now, but he'll be back. We love our community. We love its full-service community with the trash, with, you know, the city workers are just some of the best that I've ever seen. I love this city. It's, it's a place I call home and I know everybody here loves it. And it's just a, it's like a small community, but it's the fourth largest city in the state and growing. And I think there's, it'll be fun to be part of this city and the growth. But I have the experience and the background from the finance to, you know, Water One. We had a triple A bond rating. Only one of a handful of utilities have that. So we've, we did a great finance job there at the bank. You know, I helped finance a lot of people and, and get loans for them and help them build their business. And so I'm very experienced and have the knowledge to work with people. We need to work with people to modernize our city and I look forward to being that person.
Thank you both very much. And thank you for giving us background on why you were running. Well, now moving into our questions and answers. So as a reminder, you each have a minute and a half to respond and the order will rotate with each question. So we will start with you, Rob. As a candidate, what are your top three policy issues?
Um, I think, you know, number one, we need affordable housing in Olathe. And I'm, you know, wrote some of the bills and have a lot of the knowledge on how to bring some, like the RHID for larger cities. I wrote that bill. I asked myself, why haven't we done 200 or 300 already in Olathe? Also, I mean, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, Santa Fe and some of the major key points where the development's kind of aged out. And, you know, I think we need to work on that. There's a way to do it with the government, the chamber and the developers to improve because we're not a destination for people. And I think that leads in to the other thing that concerns me and probably a declining sales tax because we're not a destination. Also, the property tax has gone up considerably and a lot of that's due to valuations going up. But I would be interested in, you know, why haven't we reduced some of the property tax with the mills as the property valuation's gone up? And so that's probably something I would focus on too.
Jeff?
My, my first top issue would be fiscally responsible budgets. The, we've got to protect our city's bond rating because with a good bond rating, we're able to take on some of the different projects across the city that we could not do if we didn't have a good bond rating. So that responsible budgets, but we also must continue to strongly support our police and fire departments because they're very important to the safety of our community and what makes us a destination community for people to live. Secondly, continue to encourage economic development because with economic development, we can look for ways to reduce the property tax mill levy by especially increasing the number of commercial properties that are coming online. And finally, we have a vision for improving our roadway network. There's a couple of big projects underway or coming up, but we've got some other things that we need to be thinking about. In the West Rail Tracks, there's a study underway and we, we got to stay focused on that. And then in the south part of the city, the 169 corridor, we're lacking in development of the roadway network. And so we got to really focus on 159, 167th and 175th Street for safety. So thank you.
Thank you both. Jeff, you'll answer the next question first. What are your views on the value Olathe citizens receive for their local tax dollar?
I think we've hit a lot of value for our tax dollars. And we, the Direction Finder survey backed that up from what the citizens are telling the community. And I've been out and about talking to citizens. That's one of the things that I'm hearing, that they like the services they're receiving from our police and fire departments, our utilities, our parks and recreation department and our trails. Those are some great things that are coming out of our city and our budgets. And so there's a good value. That being said, we cannot rest on our successes. We have got to stay focused on solid budgets so that we can continue to protect our, the assets that we have.
Rob?
Yeah, thank you. I think our, definitely our police and fire are outstanding and our city workers are outstanding. I think some of our biggest assets is like now where you take your, your trees and landscape. I think that's probably one of the most successful things. And our landfills, being able to have the easy access to dispose of stuff. That helps in waste management. I think it's second to none. I think our parks are pretty good. I think they could stand some improvements. You know, fourth largest city in the state, we should have some of the best parks in the state. I would definitely push to improve our parks, but I do think we, you know, we've got a lot of them. And, you know, we're getting a good bang for our buck there. And I, I think the people in Olathe feel like they love their city, they love their parks, they love all the amenities that come with it. But in my opinion, I think the parks could use a little more improvement, maybe even expansion of all. So.
Good, thank you. And the next question will go to Rob first. What changes, if any, would you propose to the city budget?
Um, well, probably the biggest challenge, there's always efficiencies you can find in the budget. Uh, my biggest concern really is the property tax that comes in. We've seen for the last several years considerable increase, but we haven't seen the mills go down. So I would look on these increases to be able to lower the mills and try to keep your budgets within check where you're not raising it more than one or two percent. Right now, you see the property tax evaluations going through the roof. I know mine was about 11 or 12% and yet they dropped no mills. I think there was one of the school boards dropped their mills a little bit or one of the school position. But everybody else kept their same mill. And if they do that consistently year after year, they're just raising your taxes. Well, that's good right now and can't lower taxes when it's good. You're going to see people when you do have a struggle raise their taxes because revenue is short. And I think things are tightening up a little bit. So if it was me, I would have a fiscal conservative budget and find the savings I can. And, you know, but property taxes, I'm disappointed that the mills haven't been reduced on such, you know, a big increase this year. I think all citizens are dealing with that.
Jeff, your thoughts?
And I, I would agree with the, one of the things that Rob said about earlier, about the impact of sales tax revenue going down. And so it's very important that we watch our city budget. And I would want to follow in the footsteps of Kevin Gilmore, who is the outgoing at-large member who has very much promoted a cap on spending in taxes by limiting it as closely as possible to inflation. And I think that is something that we have to consider because we cannot continue to increase the mill levy or hold it steady. Our goal needs to be to reduce that and to keep the cost of living in Olathe as affordable as possible.
Okay, thank you. Over the last 20 years, the city of Olathe's development has outpaced other Johnson County communities. How would you help continue high-quality growth in Olathe? And what role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investments to Olathe? This time we'll start with you, Jeff.
Thank you. If we're going to continue to grow as a city, both in population as well as job creation, we, we've got to continue to support economic development and the tools that the city is already using. That said about the economic development tools, we have been successful in the last 20 years. And I think that raises the bar as to what we can expect and we need to be constantly looking at those tools. And are we using them to the best abilities and drawing in the best businesses? So we need to continue to watch those and absolutely we need to be looking at our capital investment on, in different areas. And I specifically mentioned earlier, my concerns about the 169 corridor. And if we hope to be able to use that area to develop business parts to enhance the budget, we have got to do some strategic planning for how we are going to develop the roadway network and expand the roadway network there. Thank you.
Rob?
Thank you. My, my thinking is I think we've got some of the best roads around. There's always places where you can have improvements since we passed the sales tax. But I think there's a, there's a lot of places. I think, you know, back before '07, we were building some of the most affordable houses in the state right here. We're not doing that today. You know, our workers are having to drive. I heard a statistic today that half the workers for Olathe don't live in Olathe. They have to drive, a lot of them along ways because they can't afford to live here. I think we've also grown outward too much. We've got a lot of places in the city that need redeveloped and we need to work on growing and redeveloping that. And I think look for ways to improve with stronger businesses that would generate stronger sales tax, more of a destination. And so I think we don't have a vision. Also, a stronger sales tax, a stronger economic vision would keep property taxes down and maybe even give us an opportunity to lower it. So that's more my vision.
Thank you. As the city considers future development and redevelopment projects, describe your views on how the city should manage and balance that growth? And we'll start with Rob.
Um, well, I mean, I think, you know, the Santa Fe corridor with the new fridge and roads going in, I think that's going to be very important how we manage that whole strip on Santa Fe. Uh, you know, we've, you know, like for example, Suller was there, we put a quick trim. That Sullivan's building the area. I know they're talking about building some stuff there, but it's been vacant for years. If you were driving through this city, someone not knowing Olathe, would you think it's the fourth largest city in the state that's strong? I've driven through a lot of cities across the country and I just wouldn't think Olathe is the fourth largest city. Now, it's got some really good spots, but I mean, even 119th, uh, you know, it's, it's not as polished as it once was. And I think we need to focus on them areas as a partnership with the chamber, the, the city and the developers to improve them areas, to make them more robust and bring them stores back that will bring the sales tax and improve the property tax, which that's how you lower property tax, through the growth side of your economy. And I just don't believe we're doing that right now. The last few years of COVID and that, I believe our property taxes or our sales tax probably slipped quite a bit. And that's something we need to focus on getting back to a place to be, come to.
To that.
As a longtime Olathe Planning Commissioner, I could talk on this for hours actually. So I'm going to have to talk really fast. First of all, for new development, I think we need to be steering as much development to areas that infrastructure already exists. A couple of areas that I can think of would be the Black Bob Porter, north of 135th Street. On both sides, we have a lot of vacant land that can still be developed. The K-7 north of 119th is another area where there is infrastructure in place that we could be using. We do need to focus on new development by capital investment in the 169 corridor. And I've talked about that three times. And so that's something that I really see as being an important potential area. But we have to really get serious about our investment in that area. And as far as redevelopment, there's two areas that are under study right now. One, you alluded to, Mr. Olson, was Santa Fe roughly from the East Railroad tracks to Merlin. We have some potential to do a lot to enhance small business opportunities along there. Another area that's under consideration that I support is Parker Street from Dennis Avenue North to approximately Calum Street. And that's both for opportunities for business expansion as well as some opportunities for some attainable housing in that areas. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're here in Olathe, but we're part of the bigger metropolitan area. So what is your philosophy on the role that the city of Olathe should play in terms of metro-wide issues? We'll start with you, Jeff.
You know, because Olathe is a city of 150,000 and so a lot of opportunities for employment here and continuing employment growth with Garmin and some of the other newer things like Coca-Cola. We absolutely need to be at the table in the region because we're leaders and we need to promote ourselves, but we can also learn from others. And so we need to be continuing to take an active role in Johnson County's economic development programs. From Siri, be a part of Mark, be a part of the conversations with KDOT, need to continue. And to continue relationships with our state and federal elected officials. We, we can learn a lot from them, but we can promote ourselves so that the investments from Topeka and Washington DC can continue to help us to grow.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, thank you again. Um, you know, I think the thing is definitely we, we need to be a partner, fourth largest city in the state of Kansas. We need to be a partner with the rest of the community here in Kansas City. I think it brings a lot of benefit, businesses, people wanting to move here, et cetera. But also with the state, I think we probably haven't, you know, taken that partnership with the state and brought more back. I think if you look at, you know, I served in the Senate for 14 years. And when you look at my colleagues from Wichita, when I was serving, they brought the bacon home. And there's a lot of tools that can help to build affordable housing in Olathe. There's a lot of tools at the state and federal levels to help so we can expand our business base and redevelop this area. But also I think we've got to be a important partner of the Kansas City Metro. I mean, we're one of the largest cities in the metro and, and so we need to work with other cities in every avenue to promote our city and to promote what we're doing, growing, bringing business, new housing, affordability.
Thank you. And we'll start with you, Rob, on this question. Do you believe the city of Olathe is on the right track?
Uh, I believe there's a lot of good things in this city that are great about. I mean, they're extremely great. I think a lot of cities wish they could have their own trash service or their own, you know, where they haul shrubs off. But there's, the, there's a lot of amenities here, but I just see over the last few years, and part of it could be because of COVID and the change in the economics. Um, we've lost a lot of restaurants, we've lost a lot of shops, we've lost, you know, there's just a lot of them businesses and people are going to Ogden Park, they're going to Legends, they're going to Liberty, they're going to Lee Summit. And I don't see us as a destination. We've lost, you know, the Great Plains Mall, which we all know what happened there, but that's set vacant for a long time, that area. And, you know, um, I, I just think there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Now, we're not a bad city by any means, but there's a lot of improvements needs to happen. I think we're a great city. I'd like to be there to work on some of them improvements, use my background, bring them resources from the state, from the feds and work with the Kansas City Regional Community.
Seth?
So I think overall the city is, is on track and doing a good job, but we can't rest on past successes because things are changing. We have to acknowledge that the economy is evolving, technology is changing and that's impacted our retail and our restaurants. And so we have to be looking at how we can improve in going forward. We've got to focus on the positive trends that we have going on. But again, we have to be looking for opportunities for the next 50 years based on the changing economy and technology and, and how that can make us a stronger community and reaching outs. And we, we have a great, I've heard you're right here in Olathe, Garmin is a great example of what the future can be. But we can't rely just on that. We have to continue to be looking for additional opportunities so we do remain on track.
Thank you. So this is the last question. What do you think are the three greatest opportunities or challenges for the city of Olathe? And how would you capitalize on them?
Houston. Um, you know, I think one of our biggest opportunities comes from our well-educated young citizenry. We have people that bring a lot to the community. We get, we have to be drawing more people like that into involvement within the community. We also, and I keep going back to development, we have a lot of open space that we can develop so that we can keep growing and enhance our tax base and bring in well-paying jobs. So I think that's, that's a first opportunity is our open space and our educated young community. Second opportunity that's important is that we have stable city finances. And because of that, we're not playing catch-up. We're able to continue to advance our infrastructure. And so instead of fixing problems, we're imagining what the future can be. And then finally, and I think this is both a challenge and an opportunity, is that we're going to have to be hiring the, the right city manager with the retirement of Michael Wilkes coming up soon. And Michael has provided stability for more than 25 years here and he's going to be big shoes to fill. But because we are growing the way we have, he's with his vision in our excellence, we're going to be able to have the right person hired because of that. So it's a challenge, but an opportunity. And we get the right person in here with our mindset, we're going to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you both for your very thoughtful answers. And now we'll go to closing statements.
Don't I answer that?
Well, I'm sorry. I was going to say, oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think the, the, some of the best assets are rates. I think I-35, K-7, K-10, and really 151st, 135th, 119th lead all through Olathe. A lot of people cut across Olathe. We need to figure out how to capture more revenue for number one. You really only have a couple exits in Olathe that have a lot of hotels. Uh, gas stations are not easily by the roads. You get people driving through on 35, going somewhere, get them to stop and eat and fill up. Uh, I think we've got it. And that's a tremendous asset, but I think that all comes with some of our redevelopment when you get people to come over. I mean, 119th and I-35, that's a great area. If we did a little work, we could probably increase sales tax revenue up there considerably. It's there. Um, you know, Santa Fe, I can't wait to see the redevelopment, what it looks like. But I think the potential for more sales tax revenue and property tax revenue eventually up there along 135th is incredible. And that's what lowers property taxes when you get growth in them areas. And that's my biggest concern. If we don't get this city back on track growing like that, that the next thing is they're going to want to increase the mills, not only the property values. And so we've got a lot of work ahead of us to get back to where we were.
Well, thank you again for the very thoughtful answers. Now we're going to turn to closing comments. You'll each have two minutes to present your closing statements. And be sure to highlight what you think distinguishes you from your opponent and making you the best suited to serve. So this time we'll start with Rob.
Thank you. Um, well, I think I've got plenty of experience in this and I bring a lot from the state, federal that we will want to bring them resources. Also been around development, can see in the backside of financing them. So I do understand how that works. I, you know, I think I've got a positive approach. I like my opponent, he seems like a nice guy. And, you know, uh, I think we can, you know, the city has so much potential that we haven't captured. Now, I think we went a long ways, but we've kind of, we've got some areas where we need to work. There's a lot of great public services. I think we got some of the best city employees and fire and police in the state, in the country. And so I think we've got all the key aspects. It's just things have changed in the economy and we need to change a little bit with them. I think the long-term plan of the state, of the city is great, but we probably need to go back and tweak it some because things are changing a lot quicker than 50 or 20 years. They're happening. Our kids do things different. We need to adapt to what they're doing so, you know, we can get them spending money in our city and growing our city. So, and I think the other thing is affordable housing. We need more affordable housing. We had that prior to two thousand and seven or eight. We need to capture. We were the city in the state that was growing at a fast pace with affordable housing. And we just don't have that today. So I think, uh, you know, our workers, people work for the city or work in our businesses here. They need a place to live that they can afford. I think we've got great parks, we can make them better. And that's something I want to focus on, I own joy. So, um, I thank you for the opportunity of having me. Hopefully this, uh, shows some of the people in Olathe my feelings. Thank you for having us.
And thank you as well for, uh, this opportunity that we both have had to be able to share. Um, I, I think that what distinguishes me as a very viable candidate is my commitment to the city. I have been, I spent forty years as a business manager of a local business, a strong local business, uh, handling budgets and looking at revenue. I understand that as a leader in my church, as an elder, as a treasurer, that was part of my responsibilities. Uh, seven years chairman of the board of Christian college, understands the leadership aspects. And so, but then very specifically here at home in Olathe, um, twelve plus years on two different occasions, I've spent, uh, on the planning commission. So I have the, uh, understanding of development, the impact it has on infrastructure from roadway networks to the sewers, water, that type of thing. Um, I'm a strong supporter of our police and fire departments. And nine years on the Olathe, uh, Citizen Police Advisory Council gave me a very unique perspective of what the men and women of the Olathe Police Department do. And I think that carries over, um, to helping understand the firefighters, because as first responders, it's much the same type of thing. And, and then finally, uh, I understand that not all of these, our budgets don't always work. And, um, to give us everything. And so I spent six years on the Olathe Police Foundation where we were raising money to do a little extra for our, uh, men and women in uniform and occasionally doing things to help the department. And they didn't have anything in their budget. So I, I really feel that, that that background, that skillset, uh, has prepared me well for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And this concludes our forum for the Olathe City Council at-large candidate forum. And you have our most sincere thank you again for participating today. On behalf of the Olathe Chamber of Commerce and the Johnson County Public Policy Council, thank you to everyone for taking advantage of this important opportunity to learn about the candidates. For more information about the candidates and videos and these and other candidate forums and advanced voting details, visit www.votejoko.com. And please share this voter research with colleagues, friends and families. Again, on behalf of the Olathe Chamber, thank you for participating in this candidate forum. We wish you the best of luck in your campaigns.
Thank you.